Financial Institutions Amendment Bill 2017. Members, please be quiet. Council now becomes committee of the whole council to consider the Anti-Money Laundering and Counter-Terrorist Financing Financial Institutions Amendment Bill 2017. Members may refer to the appendix to the script for the debate and voting arrangements for the bill. I will first deal with the clauses with no amendment. I now propose to question to you that the following clauses stand part of the bill. Clauses 1 to 6, 10 to 17, 19 to 25, 27 to 33, and 35 to 49. Does any member wish to speak? And I put a question to you that the clauses read out by the clerk stand part of the bill. Will those in favor please raise their hands? Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of members present. I declare the motion passed. Clauses 7, 8, 9, 18, 26, and 34. The Secretary for Financial Services and Treasury has given notice to move his amendments to amend clauses 7, 8, 9, 18, 26, and 34 as set out in the appendix to the script. Mr. James To has also given notice to move his amendment to amend clause 18 as set out in the appendix to the script. Members may now proceed to a joint debate on the original clauses and the amendments. I will first call upon the secretary to speak and move his amendments, then I will call upon Mr. James To to speak, but he may not move his amendment at this stage. Upon the conclusion of the debate, the committee will first vote on the secretary's amendments. Irrespective of whether the secretary's amendments are passed or not, Mr. James To may move his amendment. Secretary for Financial Services and Treasury, you may move your amendments.
Chairman, I move my amendments to amend clauses 7, 8, 9, 18, 26, and 34 as set out in the appendix to the script. We have considered views received in the deliberation and scrutiny of the bill as well as review of the provisions of the bill. We propose these amendments. These covers a number of areas, mainly to state clearly the policy intent or and/or to amend, to introduce some drafting or technical amendment. I now go over the salient points. The proposed new 5A bracket 3 bracket 4 and bracket 5 stipulates that any DNFBPs when preparing for or implementing or involved in specified transactions, then requirements related to AML and CTF, anti-money laundering and counter-terrorist financing as stated in Schedule 2 will apply to these people and transactions. Well, we have considered members' views, and in order to clarify the situation, we'd like to say that section 7 is to clearly clarify the target or the objective of the transactions as stated in sections 5A bracket 3 to 5 irrespective of whether these take place in Hong Kong or other places. And clause 9 bracket 10 is to amend a typo, and the proposed new 53ZK bracket 1D stipulates that the registrar may disclose information about people related to TCSPs. We have taken reference of members' views. The objective of section 18 is to include people regulated by the Estate Agent Authority. TCSPs or real estate agents may also involved in real estate transactions involving TCSPs. So the information collected may be related to the investigation. We have also taken into account members' views, and we propose to amend relevant provisions in Schedule 2 of the AMLO. Section 26 seeks to empower intermediary, empower DNFBPs to appoint intermediaries to conduct customer due diligence measures, and we also like to change the record-keeping period from 6 to 5. And in response to discussions with the bills committee as well as the Law Society, we propose to amend provisions related to legal professionals. Section 8 of the bill states that notwithstanding, we have included enabling provisions to the law society to promulgate guidelines, and this will not affect the law society's decision to issue PDP. They have full discretion in this, in its content. And section 34 clarifies that, clarifies the corresponding amendments related to the legal practitioner's ordinance. It states that the Council of the Law Society has the power to first decide whether the conduct of a certain legal professional is involved in AML and CTF, and then to decide whether a disciplinary hearing or investigation is to take place, and PDP is to be taken into consideration in the course of such investigations and hearing. When we're preparing for these amendments, we have fully considered views expressed by the bills committee, by the trade, as well as a legal advisor, and they are not opposed to by the bills committee. I so submit, I ask members to support my amendments. Mr. James To.
Chairman, perhaps first I will speak on the administrations' CSAs, that is, in relation to clauses 7, 8, 9, 26, and 34. I support all of them, and 18 is about something else, and I'm going to speak on that. Perhaps I will first state my views. I was quite concerned about the number of points in the scrutiny of the bill by the bills committee. When it comes to record-keeping period, well, it's changed from 6 to at least 5 years. At that time, it was said that it was only a difference of 1 year. However, I raised the point of, on principle, if international organizations states that it's 5 years, and when you consulted, you consulted on 6 years, and you said that there are some similar ordinances requiring 6 years, but those may not be fully related to the requirements of international organization. And the administration said that, well, well, since these 6 years, I consulted 6 years, and it was not opposed to, so we propose 6 years. However, I insisted on one point, but if the international requirement is 5 years, then you should consult on 5 years. And if you ask me, is 5 years all right? Well, I'm sure the trade will not say we demand 6 years. I hope that, well, since this is not the end of it, I'm sure there will be more and more requirements from international organization, that is FATF. I hope that the administration will adopt their standard. If the administration has a different view, I hope that they will make it very clear, not just this time, but in the future as well, in order to dispel misunderstanding. If, had I not asked clearly, and had I not asked questions from this angle on all of these provisions, and should it result in contravention of international requirements, it's something that we don't want to see. Say, when it comes to CDD, Customer Due Diligence, done by legal profession, legal professionals. Well, there may be people coming from all over the world to come to Hong Kong because Hong Kong is an international financial center or arbitration center. So Hong Kong lawyers will serve a clientele that is global. But now you have introduced a more stringent CDD. That means Hong Kong lawyers will have to conduct CDD on international clients. If it's someone from Italy, then you'll have to chase them all the way to Italy. Maybe the client only asked you to buy a property in Hong Kong, but they are required to know their client. Well, Hong Kong lawyers will know about the situation in Hong Kong, but if it's, say, for example Mauritius, they may not know about it. It may be a very international law firm, but it's impossible for them to know all situations in different parts of the world. Can we ask a Mauritian lawyer to conduct CDD? The administration said, if you asked them to do it, in the end, you are still responsible for it. If you ask a Hong Kong lawyer to fly over there for the CDD, or have a teleconference, or engage a law firm over there, or some intermediary to do it, well, if you can engage a lawyer that is under regulation by the relevant authority over there, and is someone with a license, well, it's not some, it's not like it's someone with a criminal record, served his sentence. We're talking about just a normal person, someone who is qualified to take up the job to be entrusted with this assignment, and that should be in order, because international societies rely on this kind of operation. And if you say Hong Kong law firms are not allowed, I think it would be rather strange.
Because you allow banks to do so, so it's not fair. Let's say, there's a customer who opens the account here, but he's from Mauritius, and then banks could ask a lawyer in Mauritius to do the CDD, and it's fine, and they won't have, the banks won't have liability. But this is not the case for lawyers, so can't be. Now, we are talking about very complicated international situation. Do you think lawyers are particularly competent so they can do that, no? Well, I've asked about it many times. Actually, the bills committee could have completed this work sooner, but the administration would just oppose to anything I said, doesn't matter how much sense it makes. But, and if every time I oppose, then all of a sudden the government decided that it couldn't oppose anymore, otherwise the deadline might not be met, and so it changed its stance and supported the amendments. Now, there will be plenty more bills like this from the Financial Services and Treasury Bureau, so please be sensible. Please try to narrow the distance with members. If it's a matter of principle, or life or death, or if we come, see to members' request, definitely cannot meet the international organization's requirements, well, then, of course, it's a different story. And you know, it's not acceptable, and you insist on that, then I will respect you for that. But if something that's rather peripheral, there's something we can, you know, talk about, so why don't we come to decision sooner? If there is a good atmosphere, then things will work better. We're talking about the same group of AOs, whether it's the Carrie Lam or the CY Loans administration. Of course, the government has changed, but I wouldn't say this secretary, Mr. Lau, is any different than, say, Professor Chen before. But anyway, I mean, there's nothing political about this. We just need to consider these bills and get them right, that's all. So we are doing our best to scrutinize the bill. Maybe, just because I'm familiar to, familiar with such subjects, so I ask a few more questions, so that means another meeting or two. I hope members will bear with me. It's like when Mr. Xu Ka-chun asked questions about social welfare because he's familiar with it. So it's fine if members ask a few more questions. If it's a matter of political life or death, then of course it's different, but if it's not, shouldn't there be some adjustments of mindset? Now, let me come to my amendment to clause 18. I'm talking about penalty. Or the time limit of prosecution, rather. Now, Mr. Wong Ting Kwan is here, it's good. Just now, Mr. Wong said he found it curious that James To should move such a CSA. The government has given a few examples on how long it took for the offense to be discovered. Now, it's all too rushed. So my assistant is not able to do the research in just half a day, but I can tell Mr. Wong Ting Kwan this, I've done some searches on different pieces of legislation. If you talk about examples of timely prosecution from discovery, say 12 months, so are there more examples for 12 months? Or for time from discovery, or are there more examples on time limit from the actual commission of the offense? I can tell you there are far more examples on cases involving time limit counting from the date of commission. So it's not like, as Mr. Wong Ting Kwan said, the government's already quoted three examples. But anyway, I'm talking about a similar legislation of a similar gravity. For example, prevention of bribery ordinance, securities futures ordinance, banking ordinance, ICC ordinance, merchant shipping safety ordinance. You know, I'll just quote a few. There are a few more, but they are more minor, so I won't talk about them. So it's not that anti-money laundering trumps everything else, we have to look at the nature. Now, if the nature is, of course, to finance terrorists, now, I think there will be a bill later on on that. But, so if it's a case like that, then we're talking about an actual crime happening. But here, we are talking mostly about regulatory offenses, filling in of forms, you know, submission of forms, whether the deadlines are met, and so on. So we're talking about this type of regulatory offenses. For example, the need to report to the registrar when business ceases. Renewal of license, and the need to report changes in particulars to the registrar, and so on. So date from discovery, that means the government discovers the offense. In theory, it means it could be discovered 10 years later, and if it's discovered 10 years later, then the administration discovers the offense, then it's because government's a good filing system, but maybe it's discovered 20 years later, but 20 years ago, there was not such an offense. And why didn't you inform me of the changes, and then within 12 months, you prosecute that person? Imagine, this is a member of the public, or is a trust, or company secretary, or trustee. Even the inland revenue department only requires keeping of records for 7 years, and tax is, business is far more serious. And about 20 years later, you prosecute this person, or you say, well, the person could always go to the court for unfair prosecution. But I mean, if it takes a lot of time and effort, you need to engage a barrister to shelve this case altogether, perhaps the cost far exceeds the fine to be levied. And then you might say, but it's just a fine. But no, it could be more than a fine, it could be imprisonment. And, and maybe it's just careless mistake, but the government makes a deliberate effort to find out. So 20 years later, you prosecute that company service provider, but maybe all the records have been destroyed, and even the premises have been razed to the ground, or he may have, the provider may have a staff member who's also retired, so it would be hard for the defendant to defend himself, because he has to rely on records or witnesses. But for the government, of course, it's got far more resources, it's got a proper system, a whole computer system, so you file everything for as long as you want. But then for the prosecuted, he has to go by his memory, or maybe his records are kept in Shenzhen, he has to go there and find it, but then it turns out to be thermal paper, so the wordings become blurred, and there's no way that a person could defend himself. So you need to strike a balance here. Now, for most laws, the offense is about so long, how long after it happens. But here. Merchant shipping, local vessels ordinance, section 82, it says, after commission of the offense, within 2 years prosecution must be made, or 6 months from discovery of the offense. Whichever is the earlier. That means if the government discovers the offense, then prosecution must be taken out within 6 months. But in any case, after 2 years, you cannot prosecute. So that's about balancing the rights of the defendant, of the prosecutor, and as a matter of fairness. So it's just one example, but there are plenty of precedents of this nature. And also, when it comes to record filing, there has to be an end somewhere. So prosecution within 3 years, or 1 year from discovery, whichever is earlier, I believe that is the appropriate balance. Mr. Hauden Chao.
Thank you. Chairman. I would like to speak on the amendments moved by Mr. James To. Put simply, the amendment seeks to impose a time limit for prosecution. Well, perhaps other members or those following our meeting may not know the full details. Perhaps I will first refer to the original wordings of the bill. That is, within 1 year from discovery of the offense by the registrar, then prosecution must be taken out. Now, Mr. James To has added another condition, he's explained that clearly just now, that is within 3 years after the commission of the offense, so which, whatever period expires first. So put very simply, my understanding is, the time limit is 3 years. So put simply, the time limit is 3 years. I was following his speech attentively, and having heard his speech, I tend to have, I will wonder, if there's a prosecution, could it then cause a more disturbance to the prosecutor, and the prosecutor may have to make a lot more effort to defend his case, and so on? That seems to be what I heard from Mr. James To. Now, if we have understood this correctly.
I'm just citing an example, but please send it be corrected to Mr. James To. Now, about records of CDD. The, going by what Mr. James To said, we don't need to go further than what the international organizations require, so instead of 6 years, 5 years should suffice. So, okay, the record-keeping requirement is 5 years. And then Mr. James To said, well, people have to dig into their records, and they may not remember what happened. So for the sake of arguments. The CDD records will be kept for 5 years. And since these records would be kept for 5 years, so let's say if there are any inquiries by the law enforcement agencies, then in theory, the person should be able to find records for the last 5 years. But then I see what Mr. To has in mind, 3 years. If we go by the current legislation, maybe 5 years should be more suitable, Mr. To, perhaps? Because already in the bill, this record-keeping requirement is 5 years, and you say you don't want people to have to struggle to remember things, and so on, then in that case, why don't we draw the line at 5 years? You know, I just want to, you know, make a suggestion, and we could just debate it. Now, if there is any breach of the law, and the law enforcement agency has to carry up prosecution, we have to consider the deterrent effect. For this AML bill, it is necessary for us to maintain our reputation and position as an international financial center. We don't want people to turn Hong Kong into haven for money laundering, and we cannot allow terrorists to raise funds here either. So if we include Mr. James To's suggestion, would it be interpreted in such a way that the deterrent effect may not be strong enough? Now, I'm just floating these ideas for discussion.
I followed what Mr. James To said, and he cited some examples in which, in some laws, that might be the norm or practice. But for the sake of this bill, or the Anti-Money Laundering and Counter-Terrorist Financing Amendment Bill, in terms of how the international community views Hong Kong, and whether our actions will give the impression that we do not care about this issue, we might be interpreted as not working 100% hard. So I'm wary that we might send such message. So for this additional condition of 3 years or bringing proceedings 3 years after the commission of the offense, I have my reservations, and I trust that the bills committee chairman, Mr. Wong Ting Kwan, might have something to say. But if we introduce this 3-year time limit, we might be seen by the international community as a sign that we are not working hard against anti-money laundering. Thank you. Mr. Ray Chen.
Thank you. Chairman. I speak in support of Mr. James To's amendment. We are discussing the time limit for prosecution, even though I'm not a member of this bills committee. On this issue, even members who are not members of this committee could take part in the discussion and offer their views. James To seeks to amend clause 18 to introduce the provision on commission of an offense within 3 years. So we are discussing 2 options between discovery of an offense or commission of an offense. Mr. Hauden Chao doubted the time limit of 3 years, and he suggested 5 years instead. So I asked Mr. So I asked Mister To why he proposed three years. Perhaps he did not have specific reasons, but if Mister Hauden Chow suggested five years, it means that um he prefers um the date to be um counted starting from the date of um commission rather than discovery. And um currently, the um provision is twelve months after the offense is discovered by or comes to the notice of the registrar of companies. And um the prosecuted company would not know um when the registrar knew about the offense. It could be five years, ten years, or even twenty. So um there's no um time limit in effect. So um it depends on when the offense is discovered. So very often in defense, well, for those who um prefer to um take the um occurrence or or commission of the offense as reference, well, Mister James To um cited other ordinances. And um he cited the um provisions in other ordinances and um they have been um operating smoothly. So um in other words, those who prefer the date of discovery have a flawed logic. So um Mister um James To has been very meticulous. Legislation is not about um citing as many examples as possible. So um usually, um if some certain examples are cited, we would of- we would often um be convinced. And um this time Mister James To cited some counterexamples and um he is moving an amendment. For this um final amendment, it must be passed um by um voting under division, and it is rather challenging. And um we cannot just, well, the government cannot just um cite some examples and said um they have been working well. Or else the pro-establishment or pro-democracy camp can follow suit. We are not um trying to argue over everything with the government. And um it's not, it's not a contest of naming as many examples as possible. But the truth is that we must examine the nature of each ordinance. And so and whether um we should use the discovery of the offense or commission of the offense and which would be more reasonable in terms of the deterrent effect or the um party being regulated, would there be undue burden? So um it's about striking a balance. Legislation is always about striking such balance. Has the government conducted such exercise at all? When Mister James To um suggested um using discovery of the offense, um were his grounds debated? For if um something, if an offense is discovered only ten or twenty years and a prosecution is made, would it be um unfavorable to the companies involved? Um if the offense happens, happened a long time ago, the um incidents or even the persons involved or staff involved um might have train- might might have changed drastically and some of them might have retired. So um that's why we have a time limit for every law. For example, it's seven years for the inland revenue department. If you ask people to recall what happened ten or twenty years ago, it is indeed very hard. Our Secretary of Justice, Theresa Chang, is very busy, as you can see. If the um time limit for prosecution is um limitless, would it be fair? F A D F asks us to verify and um keep records for at least five years. And the administration suggests some six years of um record keeping for D N F B P, so um the proposal is out of convenience for the government. If um the government insists on um the um provision, discovery by or comes to the notice of the registrar of companies, the um prosecution work, um the prosecution might exceed the um prescribed time requirement. For example, ten years, by that time, um the um customer records would likely to have been deleted already. So um if there's no record keeping requirement, nothing would be done. In um Mister To's amendment, I believe that he seeks to clarify the provision. And um he did not um take out the government's proposal wi- within one year after the offense is discovered by or comes to notice of the registrar. And um he merely inserted the um time limit of three years after the commission of the offense. And companies would not have to worry that some something happened a long time ago would be traceable. A company might have um changed many owners over ten years or so. And it's unreasonable to ask them to um take care of what happened a long time ago. Mister To also cited some precedents. So um for those who propose using commission of the offense, at least you should cite their grounds. For those who propose um using discovery of the offense, if you fail to um provide the reasons, the pro-establishment camp should not blindly support the government's original amendment. Mister James To. Mister Hauden Chow said that the um record keeping requirements would last five years. And um I'm referring to the um unlicensed T C S Ps or the provision of wrong information to the registrar or they uh fail to um inform the authorities of cessation of business. So this is different from the offenses relating to customer due diligence. Chairman. We should not just um think about the government because that would be dangerous. At the bill's committee, I um I did not do a lot of research at that time, but thanks to my assistants, after some research, I um I'm regretful that I did not talk about the government's examples, for example, the private column barrier ordinance, etc. I feel that there should be a time limit um to the commission of an offense. As for their logic, I think the law drafting division or policy division did not think the issue over carefully. My stance is that generally speaking, the um commission of the offense should be used. But for exceptional circumstances, in some cases, you can use the discovery of the offense and you can use both. That might be reasonable in some cases. But having read the examples, apparently um um it it's hard to understand what the government is doing. It might be about the um law drafting division and their approach. If we consider the commission of the offense, the issue would be clearer. If the um enforce- if we um consider the discovery by the enforcement authorities, this is not reasonable because um some um staff of the enforcement authorities might be on leave or some might leave. So um if a person de- discovers an offense and another person takes over, what um would happen? You talked about alleged commission of an offense or suspected commission of an offense. And a a person A might say this is a suspended suspected offense and um his or her supervisor might not uh agree, but at the end um it's up to the supervisor. So um when would the um time limit begin? No one can tell. So um for legal uncertainties, if an enforcement officer deems the matter to not be an offense, but another officer deems it an offense, the um party being regulated might be confused because they would not know how you work internally. As for the certainty of the time limit, they have um no way to tell whether you know about about it. So um the time limit would be um virtually obsolete. And um over the course of prosecution, some files might be provided on they might realize at some point that you knew about it already. Otherwise, there would be a loss of balance. Chairman. Mister Chow um raised an apparently valid concern and um he said when everything is lax, um F A D F might not accept it. And um the inductable offense is what matters, for example, unlicensed operation or money laundering. So um the inductable offense would be um treated separately. We are talking about the um smaller issues or regulatory issues, for example, um o- omission or negligence, the um tribunals might um take out um might deal with such offenses.
I have read the administration's reply in to the bill's committee. They did not say that if it's changed in this way, that is, uh to use um commission instead of discovered, it will not meet uh F A T F's requirements. And that is fair because it's impossible that this change renders um render us unable to meet the requirement. They will not threaten you to say that, well, we can't possibly let James To's amendment pass because that's not true. So it's not the case that we would breach the requirement of the of the F A T F. Anyway, I don't think my amendment will be passed because for some people, they just follow the instructions of uh the administration, whether it is logical or not. However, I identified a problem. I hope that the administration, especially when it comes to um the law drafting division will exercise caution because there will be more cases coming. I don't want to see them using an arbitrary approach. If the administration says that there is a trend, we will uh could, we will use discover, we will not use commission anymore, then I will pick on you every single time. And if it is a seriously unjust, I don't rule the possibility that I will be quite harsh when it comes to these proposals. If you say that it is uh on a case-by-case basis, then you should give me justification uh why you use what in which ordinance. You say that save and except ex- um extraordinary situations, say for example, some hidden and 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 difficult to detect offenses, we will use a different formula. However, I don't see that when it comes to furnishing information and um things like that, it they amount to an exceptional circumstance. Anyway, I ask members to support my amendment. Does any other members wish to speak? Mister Wong Ting Kwong?
Thank you, Madam Deputy. I've worked alongside Mister James To for over ten years. I take my hat off to Mister To when it comes to um bill scrutiny because he is very serious. And to a certain extent, he is quite stubborn. The F A T F requirement related to record keeping, say, at least five years. Well, the administration proposed an amendment to change it from six years to at least five years. Mister To talks about the time limit of prosecution of three years after commission. Well, that means it is meaningless to have the record keeping period of six years because, well, six minus three. You have cited a number of examples saying that um the word commission is used instead of discovery. And Mister Ray Chen talks about uh the uh school of discovery and the dis- and the school of commission. I think it's not a matter of how many examples you can cite. It's whether the offense itself is serious or not. If it's murder, there is no time limit of prosecution. I'm sure those from the legal sector will know, ser- for serious offenses, there is no time limit. This is to combat anti- any money laundering and counter terrorist financing. But this is anti-money laundering and counter terrorist financing. And if something like this happened, I'm sure everyone will be very angry. If we don't do what we're supposed to do, resulting in dire consequences, I'm sure that um no matter when it's discovered, the administration will have to take action. I am not siding with the administration. This is a matter of life and limb and the protection of people's property. So I do think uh the school of discovery is better than the school of commission. This is how I consider the matter. It's not about the power of the administration. There is another point, record keeping requirement of at least five years. If the administration, if the government wants to prosecute, it's not just suspicion, it's prosecution, then you have to um submit evidence. Well, the record keeping requirement period is five ye- is five years. If it's more than five years, if it's something six years took six years ago and you want to prosecute me and you want to find evidence, uh there won't be any more evidence. How can the uh government prosecute me? There is nothing they can do. So the time limit itself is not something important. This is about ca- uh terrorist financing. It's not just Hong Kong, it's the whole world. I gave my report and then I uh stated my view. I couldn't understand why Mr. Toh proposed three years because that's my understanding. And Mr. Toh suggested three years. I don't understand. I so submit. Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak? Mr. Eddie Ju?
Thank you. I was listening upstairs and I heard an interesting debate in relation to the school of discovery and the school of commission. I thank Mr. James Toh for his efforts to scrutinize the bill in the Bills Committee. And he proposed this important amendment. I only want to raise two points. Some members may talk from a different angle, saying that, well, it seems that it undermines the administration's power in law enforcement. Perhaps, well, since you are from the Democrats, people will think that we're afraid that the administration is going to use this to persecute us ten or twenty years later. But if I step into the shoes of the loyalists to consider whether Mr. Toh's proposal of three years is better, three years from commission, you can try to think in the shoes of the administration. Well, with power comes responsibility. If we start, if the clock starts ticking from the time of discovery or when the matter comes to the notice of the registrar, well, you have to consider about someone making a report. Say, in a case I've come across lately, it's the company registry. It's about the address or personal information of a director. There was some falsification and I was asked to follow it up. And I found that under the company's ordinance, there is actually a time limit. And it's something that took place over ten years ago, so I could not follow up. And I asked the company registry, if there is a time limit or from the date of commission, then they will say that, well, there's nothing I will do. However, if it's from the time of discovery, then you can imagine this. I received a report saying that Mr. Ju's trust is dodgy because decorations have not been made and this offence is committed. So documents are produced. And when these documents go to the hands of the law enforcement agency, then they can't say that we won't do anything because it's from the time of discovery. Mr. Wong Ting Kwong talked about a record-keeping period of five years. Beyond that, there is nothing you can do. But if I am minded to try to set you up, then I will wait till year six, seven, or eight and produce the document, then the law enforcement agency will have to investigate. These offences are not serious. You don't have to put a huge burden on the administration. Perhaps this is something you can consider when you decide whether to support the amendment. And I would like to talk about the international standard. Mr. Holden Chow said that if it's changed from discovery to commission, then international organizations may say that we have not done our best when it comes to fighting against terrorism. But the tone of the second reading debate is not to do too much, just to do the minimum. If the requirement is five years by international organization, then you need to change it from six to five. If we would like to strike a balance between international monitoring regulation as well as business and business facilitation, then we need to try to minimize burden on the administration or practitioners without breaking international requirements. Mr. James Toh and his excellent team said that there is no international standard when it comes to discovery or commission. These are minor offences. It would be better for us to lessen the burden on law enforcement agencies and the administration as well as practitioners. So I ask members to support Mr. Toh's proposed amendment. Does any other member wish to speak? Mr. Holden Chow?
Thank you, Madam Deputy. This is a very interesting discussion. We specifically discussed about Mr. James Toh's amendment on a very specific issue. Well, someone mentioned about school of discovery and school of commission. Let me say this, the administration proposed discovery. I think it was Mr. Ray Chen who said that no one knows when it would be discovered. Well, when it comes to when the offence is discovered or comes into the notice of the registrar, if there is a report made to the company registry and a dossier is created,
then of course there will be proper records. So there is a specific date and it's identifiable. Because I heard from other colleagues saying that for the school of, if it's the school of discovery, we wouldn't know when the registrar of companies comes, you know, comes to notice this. But I don't agree to that argument. Let's say if the case goes to court, the registrar will have to tell the judge when it has come to his notice. So the discovery is that someone made a report and a file is created. And so I wonder if that is a specific date. Now, the school of discovery claims that there cannot be a specific date. But commission, well, put it another way, sometimes you may not know for sure when the offence is committed. It may be open to debate. But if it's discovery, it's the date when the law enforcement agency receives a report. So there is a specific date. From this point of view, I believe the school of discovery's arguments make sense. Now, I was listening very carefully to Mr. James Toh's speech. He said there's no need for us to be too concerned because relatively speaking, these are less serious offences. It's not that the international organizations will say that we are not fulfilling our obligations because of this. So there's no need to be too concerned. But what if we look at it from a different point of view? Now, we state in the bill, there's a three-years time limit. If this amendment is passed today, then that means there will be a three-years time limit. So could it lead to an interpretation? So people will just, you know, go easy or so they know because the time limit is only three years, so they need not worry about it after three years and people will be less vigilant in complying with the requirements. I'm saying, now personally, I think for the anti-money laundering ordinance, it is important for our reputation, it's for us, important too for us to align our practices with the international standards. Then we are not saying that we should be overly stringent. No, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying we should be too demanding. But then there is the international requirement. Mr. James Toh said this in the Bills Committee. Well, they only ask you to keep CDD records for five years, there's no need to go for six years. I agree with him. I think his point is valid. But I take one principle very seriously. I don't want to give the impression that we do not follow the international standards. And I don't want us to send out the message that we are letting you off after three years. So people will be less vigilant if there's a three-years time limit. So I'm worried that people will not take the ordinance seriously. And that's my point of view. Of course, I welcome other points for discussion. So I'll see if other members have other arguments advance. Mr. James Toh? I spoke just before Mr. Wong Ting Kwong. So I have actually addressed all his queries, although it didn't seem to have hurt me. I only focused on one point. Now, we're talking about counter terrorist financing. Of course, these are serious offences, then it's one matter. But here we are talking about non-indictable offence, of course, it's a rather technical term. Put simply, these offences won't be heard at the High Court. So within the framework of counter terrorist measures, this is at the lowest rung. So these are the most minor offences in that regard. These are really regulatory offences, like you are late in submitting a form or in changing your particulars and so on. So for all regulatory offences, there should be the same formula in dealing with them, so there is certainty. Also, in terms of government resources required and the effort of the general public to keep records, this is something we have to consider. And by keeping records, we're not talking about CDD records. No, we're talking about records in relation to the licence. It's not about records on customers' information. Does any other member wish to speak? If not, Mr. James Toh, do you wish to speak again? Secretary for Financial Services and Treasury, do you wish to speak again?
Mr. Chairman. On the amendments moved by Mr. James Toh on behalf of the government, I wish to express our opposition. For new section fifty-three ZO of the bill, it states that in the proposed new part five A of the AML ordinance, i.e. the licensing system of trust or service company service providers, there is a time limit for prosecution of all offences. And that provision is equivalent to the provisions in section fifty-three. Section fifty-three applies to money service operators. And there's a prosecute time limit of twelve months. This section has been operating well since its implementation in 2012. Now, if Mr. James Toh's amendment is passed, then the prosecution time limit would not be the same for these two provisions. In other existing pieces of legislation, such as the marriage ordinance and the mandatory provenance fund schemes ordinance, there are similar prosecution time limits. So we're not adopting any new drafting approach for the new section fifty-three ZO. Now, for offences in relation to the licensing system of a TCSP under the bill, such as operating a trust or company service without a licence, becoming a director without approval, these are not minor offences. The penalty could be fifty thousand dollars or more and that could be imprisonment in six months. So considering the severity of the offence, we have no intention to change the current approach. And I'll put the question to you that the amendments moved. The secretary has already spoken. So you cannot speak again. The point he made wasn't made earlier. No. I've already asked you whether you wish to speak again and you said no. Sorry, speaker is not coming through. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through. Yes, I know that. But if after the secretary has spoken and then you speak again and then after you speak, the secretary has to speak again. No, I have to put the question to you that the amendments moved, as the Secretary for Financial Services and the Treasury passed. Those in favor, please raise their hands. Those against, please raise their hands. Mr. James Toh claims a division. The division bell will be rung for five minutes. Mister James To claims a division, the division bell will be rung for five minutes.
Voting begins. Please check your votes, if there are no questions, voting is closed and results are displayed. Fifty-three members present, fifty-two four. The question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. Clauses seven, eight, nine, twenty-six and thirty-four as amended. And I'll put the question to you, that the clauses as amended readout just now stand part of the bill. With those in favour, please raise their hands. Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present, I declare the motion passed.
Mister James To, you may move your amendment. Chairman, I move my amendment to further amend clause eighteen as set out in the appendix to the script. I request a division. Mister James To requests a division, the bell will be rung for five minutes. Voting begins. Please check your votes. Voting is closed, the results are shown. From the functional constituencies, twenty-six present, eight four fifteen against, two abstentions. From the GCs, twenty-seven present, twelve for fourteen against, one abstention. The question is not agreed by majority respectively of each of the two groups of members present, I declare the amendment negatived. Clause eighteen as amended. As the secretary's amendments to clause eighteen have been passed by the committee earlier, I now put the question to you, that clause eighteen as amended stands part of the bill. Will those in favour, please raise their hands, those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present, I declare the motion passed. All the proceedings on the anti-money laundering and counterterrorism financing financial institutions amendment bill twenty seventeen have been concluded in committee of the whole council. Council now resumes. Secretary for Financial Services and Treasury. President. I now report to the council that the anti-money laundering and counterterrorism financing financial institutions amendment bill twenty seventeen has been passed by committee of the whole council with amendments. I move the motion that this council adopts the report. I now propose the question to you that the motion moved by the Secretary for Financial Services and the Treasury be passed. In accordance with rule fifty-nine brackets two of the rules of procedure, the motion shall be voted on forthwith without amendment or debate. I now put the question to you as stated, will those in favour, please raise their hands, those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present, I declare the motion passed. Third reading, anti-money laundering and